Hi, good evening. Today's April the 18th. My name is Liz Lotychinsky. I'm the Chair for the Cannabis Advisory Panel. Eric made me sit up here. Patty, now I understand what it feels like. So what we'd like to start off with is a round of introductions. I think I've just introduced myself. So Mary, would you like to go next?
Yes, those are all on.
Mary Fleishman, member of the public.
Dustin Miller, Deschutes County Sheriff's Office.
Enter New Bauer Oregon.
Gary Braceley, Tokyo Starfish in the Economic Development Position.
And Kyle?
Hello, everybody. Kyle Gorman. I'm with Oregon Water Resources Department, State of Oregon.
And Dave?
Hi, Dave Doyle, Deschutes County County Council.
Commissioner Chang?
Good evening, everyone. Phil Chang, Deschutes County Commissioner. I'm not the primary Commissioner attending today, so I'm just gonna keep you in the background while I'm cooking dinner.
Okay, we might want to know what you're having, but we'll get to that later. Commissioner there? Oh, you're muted. Okay, you're muted.
I got it. Liz, you look really good up there. Anyway, Patty Adair, Deschutes County Commissioner. Thank you so much for having the meeting tonight.
Thank you. And Representative Krop?
Good evening, Jason Krop, State Rep for House District 54. Nice seeing everybody.
Thank you for being here, everybody, either live or via the internet. Our next point of business is to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Has everybody had an, oh, okay. Oh, Andrew, I'm sorry, Andrew, you're muted right now. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, sorry, my camera's not working this evening, but Andrew, member of the public, I'll be here.
Thank you. Okay, so if everybody has had an opportunity to review the minutes, any questions, any changes, any comments? Those in the room, those online?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion has been made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A second and any, all approved? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes have been approved. I'm still a little rusty at this. I haven't led a true meeting in a while. At this point, Mr. Doyle, would you like to give us an update on the marijuana revenue litigation? And the outcome of that?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. First of all, folks, I'm providing the update tonight because Adam Smith, who you've probably met, I think he was at one of your earlier meetings, he's, he left the county, he's moved on to private practice, and so I'm filling in for the interim on most of the land use matters, including this. So I'll be very brief. As you may know, the county filed a litigation against the state specific to marijuana tax revenue that the state withheld after the point in time that the county referred a measure to the voters to consider whether or not to opt out of allowing additional marijuana businesses in Deschutes County. There was a disagreement essentially between the state and the county over application of the applicable statute in ORS 475B. Our argument, of course, being that the statute didn't contemplate the scenario where the county was in and allowed the establishment of marijuana businesses and then subsequently opted out to disallow new ones, but essentially grandfather in the existing ones. And that really was what the issue was about, because the way the statute read, if you opted out, then you weren't entitled to get the marijuana revenue, your portion of it from the taxes. But the statute was written at a time, in fact, the author of the statute, Rob Bovee, who worked with AOC at the time, indicated there was never any discussions about a scenario where a county was in and then subsequently went out, and whether that would disenfranchise them or disqualify them from being able to get tax revenue that was predicated upon the existing establishments. So in any event, that lawsuit was filed, it was proceeding through Circuit Court, and in the course of discovery, Adam Smith, who was handling it, basically realized that the formula that the state was using to calculate which jurisdictions received the marijuana tax revenue and how much they received, there was an issue with how they were applying that, such that if the county continued in its lawsuit, we may have won the battle but lost the war, meaning we might have won the lawsuit and then ultimately ended up with less tax revenue than if we were to just walk away from the lawsuit. So the decision was ultimately made to dismiss that lawsuit and to just proceed now prospectively, as we have with the legislation that Jason had a hand in crafting, and that essentially brought the county back into the distributions for marijuana tax revenue. And that's, I know certainly a part of what this committee does, is to identify some of the potential uses for those dollars. So that's sort of the long and short of it. It was a storied affair, and a lot of times statutes just don't anticipate situations that actually occur on the ground, and I think that's what happened here. I don't know that there was any ill will or bad faith on anybody's part. I just think the state genuinely believed that, you know, it was a very black and white thing. You were either opted out or you weren't opted out. If you were opted out, you weren't entitled to the revenue, and if you were not opted out, you would be entitled to it. And we were that unique scenario where we had existing businesses that essentially were in, and new businesses that were going to be disallowed based on the opt-out vote of the public. So, unique situation. In any event, the lawsuit has, in the last couple of months, been dismissed by the county, and now we're just simply dealing with the situation we have now, wherein the county is back and eligible to receive the tax revenues, this committee being part of that and part of the legislation. So that's the update I can provide. I can answer any questions, or at least attempt to, if you have any, any questions. Otherwise, I wish you folks, I hope you have a good, a good solid meeting. I'll be jumping off of Zoom here shortly.
Any questions? I do have one for you. In, you mentioned that as part of the discovery, there was the risk that the county may receive less money, even if we had won that battle. Is that a risk now?
No, no, because the formula that the state's applying, our lawsuit would have potentially challenged that. And so with our lawsuit dismissed, that's not being challenged, and that's still in place.
Okay, okay.
And I might add, if we'd have persisted with the lawsuit, the way it was developing, we would have had a name about 15 other counties as defendants in the lawsuit, instead of just having a lawsuit against the State of Oregon. And so that was also another consideration, whether we wanted to, in essence, enlarge the lawsuit to have approximately half the counties in the state names, named as defendants, you know, hostile to the Deschutes County. In essence, we would have been the plaintiff, naming them as defendant. So that was another factor in not moving forward.
Probably better to play nice with our fellow counties.
Absolutely, and we're very fortunate that the legislature and Jason, obviously spearheading that, was able to get us back into the formula and in a position where we could receive the distributions. I certainly, had that not occurred, I suspect the lawsuit probably would have continued, because we would have had nothing really to lose, and we would have continued with that, I suspect. But now that we're back in and subject to distributions, you know, there was a bigger downside if we continued with the lawsuit.
Okay. And Jason, is there anything you'd like to contribute to this part of the conversation?
No, I think, I think Dave covered it pretty well.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments on this part of the agenda? Okay, thank you, Dave. I'll turn it now over to Eric.
Thank you, Chair. I met the group in January, but it was via Zoom, so I'll introduce myself again. My name is Eric Krop. I work as Deputy County Administrator. Last meeting, I provided an update on the marijuana tax collection and use history. In addition to providing the update tonight, I'll be helping to staff the committee. We moved the committee, the staff support from Community Development Department to the County Administrator's Office, because the topics being discussed go well beyond, include community development, but include our other departments as well. So we felt that it was, it would be better to have this committee staffed by the County Administrator's Office, because it's more general in nature. With that, Laura Scundrick, over in the corner, is, will be assisting me. She's an administrative analyst in the County Administrator's Office, so the two of us will be working to support this committee. Basically, my, my report has, it's the same information that I presented in January, but I just wanted you to have it fresh. There's a chart that, that goes over the different fiscal years, and has the collections and then the expenditures for the marijuana revenue. They don't necessarily line up, but if the money is not expended, it rolls forward. But you'll see that a majority of the funds have been used to support the sheriff's detective, marijuana detective. There was one deputy position added in fiscal year 1819, and then the second position was added in fiscal year 1920. Also, a large percentage of the funds have gone to community development and code enforcement, as well as current planning. And then the balance of the funds have been used in health services for Substance Abuse Prevention Program, and also a one-time funding for the Prevention Specialist in Lapine and Sisters. So that's how the funds have been used the last couple of years. You'll notice on the chart that there is no fiscal year 2122 because of that revenue not coming in. But really, this, this helps kind of set the, sets the stage, or just provides some background for the next item. Also, one more thing, when I introduce myself, I, I have a different role as well. I'm our interim Health Services Director. I took on that role in January. Our Health Director, Dr. George Conway, had been serving as Health Director and Health Officer, which is more of a medical position, and he wanted to just focus on the Health Officer role. So we have a vacant Health Services Director position, and I volunteered to be our interim Health Director. That's not my background, I won't be an applicant for the position, so I'm just, just helping out for now. But I kind of have a dual role there. The other thing on the marijuana revenue and expenditures, the staff report notes that the county opted out October of 2019, and that's when the marijuana revenue stopped coming from the state, that same month and year, October of 2019. With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Questions for anybody?
Quick, Dave.
Okay. So in this, thank you very much, and I-
You're welcome.
I'm very sorry that I didn't include you and Laura in the introductions.
Oh, no problem. Happy to be here.
Okay. So as Eric indicated, there has been a history of essentially four line items where marijuana revenue collections have, has been spent. And in this part of the agenda, what I'd like to do is get ideas from each of the panelists, because I believe that we wanted to join this to provide constructive recommendations to the county commissioners on how marijuana tax revenues can and should be spent. Again, we're just offering recommendations. They can accept them or reject them. As we all know, the, the budget cycle for our county is fiscal year starts on July 1st. So monies collected in the current fiscal year essentially have been spent. There's no debate, there's no discussion on, on those monies. But we do have an opportunity to make recommendations going forward to the Budget Committee, which is comprised of the three county commissioners and three members of, members of the public on the Budget Committee, and they are meeting at the end of May for consecutive days, I believe.
Correct.
If we come up with a recommendation or recommendations to bring forward to that Budget Committee, then they can take it under advisement and decide if that's what they want to do with the revenue collected for the fiscal year, starting in July of 2022. If we don't come up with recommendations, then what, Eric?
The budget will, will get passed in, in June, and what I would do is, is forward the recommendations to the county commissioners after the budget is passed. I mean, the Board of County Commissioners can, can change the budget, it doesn't mean they will, but I would, I would still forward the recommendation.
Okay, so I guess what, how I take that, how I listen to that comment is, if we come up with recommendations, terrific. If we don't, the Budget Committee is still going to go forward with a budget. Monies that come in from marijuana revenue is, tax revenue, will, will likely be spent somehow, but not under our recommendations. If we make a recommendation for this year in this meeting, then when we readdress revenue for fiscal year 2023, we have an opportunity to change where those dollars are, or recommendations on where those dollars could be allocated. So it's not as if we're making a end-all-be-all recommendation. Okay, so with that as a, as a prelude, for those of you on the panel that are on Zoom, do you have any ideas that you came onto this panel thinking, gee, I'd really like the money to go here? Oh, yes, Jason.
I just had a quick budget question for Eric, if you don't mind?
Of course.
So Eric, and this is me guessing, my, my guess is, like, property tax revenue is, is probably readily forecastable when you're making budget decisions. How does the county make budget decisions with money like this, which might be a little more, little more difficult to predict, the amount?
Yes, Representative, with, with marijuana revenue, we project what we expect the revenue to, to be based on the best information we have available. Based on the last quarter of, of collection, we estimate about $168,000 for next year in marijuana revenue. So that's, that's what our projection will be in the budget. Then if, if it comes in, if it comes in lower than likely, General, County General Fund would, would be added to, to make up the difference. And if it came in higher, then we would, the funds would carry forward if we didn't expend them. So we just, we're a revenue projection based on, on the base, the best information available. In fact, the county estimate for next year is about $168,000, whereas the state estimate is $185,000. But I would recommend this committee to focus on the $168,000. And really, when you look at the history of, of the marijuana revenue versus expenditures, the county has been expending, putting more, or adding County General Fund to supplement it.
Thank you.
So back to that question, any other overarching questions before we start with the individual discussions from the panelists? Nope. Okay, would someone like to start with an idea that they had coming onto this panel? Yes, Mary?
I'd like to see more in education. You know, this Cana Facts was presented, but I've not seen anything of that at all. And so this, apparently money's been put out to produce that, but I'm not seeing anything happening with that. It kind of concerns me with the, I think it's like 52% or 40, 54%, it's going to the Sheriff's Department, which they already have the budget that they have. But I'd like to see some of those dollars spent more in education, and specifically for our young people, who, either Cana Facts is great, but those are not the, that's not the target of who's going to pay attention of what's going on hemp versus marijuana. And the understanding of, like, if you're, if you're involved or participating in the black market marijuana, it's, there's no education as to what that marijuana is. The pesticides, everything else, there, I really believe there needs to be more money put into the educational component.
And by education, you're specifically addressing youth 18 and younger?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then, and I am kind of wondering, because I see that, you know, there was specifically Prevention Specialists for Lapine and Sisters, and I'm not quite sure why those two were targeted, or that's because those are, those specialists are already available here in Bend, but, and exactly what their role is and what they're doing and how that ties into this. I mean, if it's just mental health in general, I get it, but because of the, this funding being specific to marijuana tax, really want to know how those dollars all pay in, or play in. So that's kind of my first thinking about this.
Okay, so you did ask a question that I can't answer. Maybe Eric can, the Lapine and Sisters?
Yeah, the Prevention Specialists work with the schools and, and youth. It's not, it's not the counseling services, but it's working, working with our schools, and we have, we have that same function in the city of, or in, in the Bend-Lapine School, so it was to do outreach to those communities.
Okay, but it's not marijuana-specific, it's just mental health?
It's, it's marijuana and other drugs and alcohol targeted towards, I mean, the target audience is, is students.
Okay.
And it's, it's includes marijuana, but other drugs as well as alcohol.
Okay, and, and that's only a one, it is, so right now, that's a one-time funding?
Yes.
What's happening with those positions, then?
I, I'll have to look that up.
Phil, his hand?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang has a question.
Yes.
I could chime in on this. So the, the, really, all, all of what we're talking about, the school-based prevention work, it is more broad than just substance use and addiction issues, that deals with suicide prevention, bullying, teen pregnancy, things like that. The Ben-Lapine Partnership is something that during the budget cycle, we voted to support last year, with the intention that it was the first year of a three-year partnership. And the Lapine and Sisters funding was also, that was a continuation of, of prior year's efforts. So I would anticipate that we, you know, it's, it will be in the budget by default unless, unless someone deliberately suggests that we take it out. That said, there is, there is no comparable function in, in Redmond, in the Redmond School District right now, so I point that out for you all. And, and yes, those, those prevention efforts are broader than just substance use disorder prevention, but substance use, substance use disorders are a big piece of those prevention efforts.
And is the, let's call it $115,000 for that Prevention Specialist, is that a full-time equivalent?
That, that funds one position plus salary and benefits.
It does?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, any other points you'd like to make, Mary?
Just, again, we got the, the Cana, Cana Facts, and somehow figuring out a way to reach out to our young people. They're not going to look at Cana Facts, let alone their parents are going to look at Cana Facts. And so trying to figure out or develop a way to get some information out, out to those young people of like, what they're up against. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the panel? Oh, Kyle, you've got your hand raised. Thank you for waiting patiently.
Thank you.
Thank you. So not really knowing the full breadth and width of the Deschutes County's budget. So all things aside from that, I was on the Upper Deschutes Watershed Council for a number of years. And one of the hardest programs to fund from that perspective was education. And so I my my heart kind of lies towards the prevention specialist or substance abuse. For high school and even middle school, if that's, if that's needed. And I would, I would encourage us to invest in those those areas with this money. So that's about it.
Okay, so continuing on with the Sisters and Lapine and adding, you you keep swapping around on my screen, sorry. Adding in a one for Redmond because Commissioner Chang indicated that there wasn't a behavioral specialist in Redmond, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, because I live in Redmond, I I would agree.
Okay, yes, Patty, thank you.
I just wanted to add that clear, oh, it's fine, Clear Alliance in Redmond, they have historically done a lot of programs regarding drug information for years, so don't discount that there is a drug education there because Clear Alliance truly has stepped up. In fact, they have a program where they, almost all the counties in the state are trained by their people in order to do drug education. Mandy Puckett runs that program, I don't know if you guys are familiar with her or not, but we actually give them some grant funding.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. Anyone else? Andrew, you got your camera working, hi. You've got your hand up, would you like to speak?
Ah, yes, thank you. Okay, so I agree with what has been said so far. Because of what we learned several months ago in the last meeting about the funding being pretty well-grounded for the Sheriff's Department. And them kind of pursuing their goals without us so far and being able to continue that for the foreseeable future. I agree that more of this fund should go toward education. And I feel like the number that was just thrown out, the hundred and fifteen thousand for the Sisters. If if that's just one position, I feel like that's a bit exorbitant. Considering what teachers make there, you know, but also for like community development. And parks for second part, we said education. For second point for the funding.
So you agree with education and then your second point is community development, is that what?
Yeah, more toward the Parks and Rec division.
Parks and Rec, okay, although I believe Parks and Rec has their own budget.
That's correct, the Deschutes County doesn't have a Parks Department.
Right. And again, clarification based on what Andrew asked, the one fifteen, is that for two specialists or one who's one individual who splits time between?
It's likely for one, the the prevention specialist are a master's degree. Employees who have a master's degree and then that's that's salary and benefits, benefits make up about forty percent. I mean, if you take a salary and then times it by forty percent and add it, that's the total.
It's not wages.
So that still gives you what, sixty-five, almost seventy thousand for one position, just considering everybody else in the school district's wages. I understand they're a vital component, or sixty percent would give you sixty thousand one hundred and fifteen, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, one one thing is is the school district, the the school district is different than the county, so that the position does likely make more than teachers, but that's a separate organization. And I and I I do believe teachers are underpaid. My wife is a teacher, my brother, my sister-in-law, my parents are retired teachers, I'm from a family of teachers.
Okay.
I was just, this is Mary again, I would just add, it's like what I'm talking about, education. The educational component is more than just having those specialists in schools. There's got to be another way to make contact, whether I don't care if it's, I'm not a Twitter fan, but however way we can all kinds of different levels to make contact with these young people to to get to get them to understand what's going on. So it's not necessarily having a specialist in the school. We got to, we got to think outside the box of other ways to reach these young people. So A, they they, especially with the black market stuff, that they're they're poisoning themselves. So we got to think outside the box of how to get this point across to these young people.
Okay, okay, thank you. I I do have a recommendation that I've been researching. And that is to provide some funding for the stabilization center located in Bend, but is it is a county-wide function and it is twenty-four seven. Law enforcement or individuals who are going through a mental health crisis can be law enforcement can take people there or individuals can go there if they need a quiet place to just try and get back into some form of stability, stabilization center. There have been recent news reports indicating that their funding is in jeopardy. They were funded initially by a grant, I think that two-year grant is coming due, ending. They are applying for additional money, and again, I don't know all the details, but this is what I know. From what I've researched. It's a twenty-four hour center, seven days a week, but an individual cannot stay there longer than twenty-three hours, otherwise it becomes a residential location. However, if a law enforcement person drops an individual off or if someone walks in the door at three P M. They may need to stay there twenty-three hours, which is why having it operational for twenty-four hours is very important. And when an individual is there, what the workers at that center do is understand what the needs of that person is and try and connect them with the other resources that are available in the county. I'll pause here because I see Commissioner Adair has her hand up.
I believe that the stabilization center is going to get another impacts grant, which was the two point five million. And then also, I we found another, I believe, two hundred and fifty thousand from Central Oregon Health Council. So I think that their twenty-four seven funding will happen. But if you have some money for it, it's it's always needed. So I just wanted to tell you, it's not such a dire situation as originally we might have thought a month ago.
Okay, good, that's good to hear.
I I just don't think it's been totally confirmed, the impact scrap. I think we've heard, we've heard it, but we haven't seen the email, does that make sense? But then the Health Council, two hundred and fifty thousand will come if we get the two point five million. So it's a crazy world.
And is some of that funding coming from the where the local marijuana tax is going into O H A, they've got this huge pot of money?
No.
No, okay, no, okay. Okay. Because they have a lot of money going on there.
They do.
With a lot of delayed meetings. So one thing that I I do want to have some discussion on is the the funding for the deputies that are responsible for code enforcement, is that?
Yeah, here's a, he has a question, he wants to mention.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Gary.
Oh, just, I was going to comment that, you know, I mean, I'd like to kind of go back and visit the pillars that we're supposed to be focusing on, you know, I think it was enforcement, public safety, education. Excuse me, I might not be remembering the fourth one, was it code? You know, back to the original charter of, you know, the panel. And I think if you look at that, you know, to your point for substance abuse and some of those. They've diverted a lot of the state tax money because of, what was it, measure one-ten?
I believe so.
And there is a huge pool of money sitting there for substance abuse that they haven't even let out. I think it's two hundred million dollars or something like that, and they're having troubles you know, deploying those funds and and haven't had a huge participation in that program yet. But I think there's funds available for that once they start flowing, hopefully. You know, I think as far as enforcement and law enforcement, there's the emergency fund that the state has let out this year, that I think there's a lot of you know, money there that the different county sheriff's departments can tap into, it looks like. You know, I kind of go back to, you know, I think education is money well-spent. And I think one area we should possibly consider, we haven't discussed, is remediation of some of these sites. From my understanding, some of these sites are left in pretty environmentally hazardous situations.
The illegal gross.
Illegal sites after they've left, like the one east of town, I know they've talked about that. And to my knowledge, there's no really funds to address that issue. And you know, I think in a way, that's definitely public safety, that there's, you know, toxic chemicals and and you know, an environmental hazard on these properties that can't be dealt with. So I think that's something that we should possibly consider. But I do think that, you know, there is some state money deploying into other areas that wasn't two years ago.
Right, and and with our, I'll call it little pot of money, a hundred and seventy thousand, we shouldn't be directing monies to areas that could be funded by that larger pot that O H A is sitting on right now.
Well, O H A for substance abuse, and and I believe, didn't the governor allot a certain amount of funds to battle the, you know, an emergency funding for the illegal grows in Oregon?
Those are funds that were for
There was about twenty million that was allotted, and a lot of that came to delegation for humanitarian aspect of this as far as dealing with people who may be stranded here, may be working against their will out there and things like that. A lot of these grants that we are operating on under don't necessarily cover our our wage for our officers or detectives that are investigating, a lot of it will cover our education and our equipment and our training and different things like that, but not necessarily salaries. And I know that our our county has been absorbing a lot of the salary paid for it. And there is a new grant that is coming out that we are looking at potentially applying for, but I don't believe it's for staffing. For a lot of it, it would be for more of your, your training and more of your equipment and different things like that to to help us operate, operating costs more.
So the question that I was trying to ask earlier, but this is very good discussion. The the two positions that are on the budget shown on the spreadsheet, two hundred and forty thousand per year. Is, is that exclusively marijuana revenue, tax revenue money, funding those?
So I believe our commissioners can answer that probably better, but they they initially, yes, they did initially pay for some salary stuff, yes. But that was in the years of eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty.
Yeah, I don't I don't see how it's possible after nineteen twenty. I mean, if you if you're looking at the numbers here, there's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in nineteen twenty, and you expended four hundred and fifty-five thousand. And the Sheriff's Office was two hundred and forty of that, so you're going to run in the same scenario, right? I mean, if there's only going to be a hundred and seventy grand, we're talking about a splash in the bucket for for really
Cover either of those like that.
Correct. Right, so.
The marijuana detectives in the Sheriff's Office have been funded through three sources, the Sheriff's Office. Marijuana revenue and County General Fund.
So obviously, we don't want to risk.
Just to be to be really clear, there has been no marijuana revenue going into those positions at the Sheriff's Office for the last couple of years. That's, I think that's basically what Hunter was saying, or was speculating, but I can confirm that because we haven't been receiving those revenues since twenty nineteen.
So if that's the case, how are you funded?
Funded through the county and through the Sheriff's Office.
Those two areas.
So the Sheriff's Office itself and the county are picking up those those costs.
Okay, so again, from a from a standpoint, you know, let's kind of back up for a minute. Standpoint of recommendations that this panel is going to come forward with. We've got education mentioned several times. And and maybe we come up with two or three different, with our big pot of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, you know, two or three recommendations on where a portion of that money should be funded. It doesn't sound like if you only get a part of that, and I'm speaking you because you're you're with the Sheriff's Department, right? That your position isn't going to go away, there has been funding allocated from the Sheriff and the county to pay for your position and the other person's position.
Correct, the Sheriff feels it's important enough, he wants to fund our position, so yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Any help we can get, obviously, anybody's going to be looking for help when it comes to that, but our Sheriff feels that this is an important enough position that he has chosen to fund that and help with even our equipment, different things like that out of our Sheriff's Office fund, yes.
Okay.
Including the county's fund as all, as well, so.
Yes.
I have a question, just for the Sheriff's Office, like, I mean, do you guys feel that your education level is where it needs to be? To be able to discern the different types of grows and, you know, what you're looking at, I mean, you've been running the program now for a couple of years, you feel like you guys are pretty tight?
Yes, as far as our education goes, it's it's continued education, as you know, being in the industry with different cannabinoids and different ways that things are processed and safe ways that things are processed and not so safe ways that things are processed as far as education for our detectives as to how invest, how to investigate locations. And the safety of different things, yes, we are, we're doing our best we can to keep up with that education portion. I always try and err on the side, the side of caution, I see, I'm, I I am probably what you would consider the expert for the Sheriff's Office, I'm not an expert, does that, does that make sense?
Right.
I have a limited amount of education that I've been able to acquire over the last few years. This put me at a place that I can successfully investigate with using our labs, with using Orange Potonics Light Labs with using using different things like that to be able to function and put together prosecutable and investigative cases. By no means would I have some of the education that people in the industry have in that case. It, I don't know that we would be able to fully educate somebody in that.
And keep up with it, right?
Because it is ever-changing, but yeah, we do have constant trainings and different things that we're doing. I mean, I've I've even explored going and talking with people locally about different processes and different things. How edibles are made in different kitchens and different things like that, constantly keeping up on the education portion.
Yeah.
But by no means am I going to say that I'm the expert in it, does that make?
No, totally, you know, I'm just, for me, it's wondering, you know, you guys are feel successful with what you're doing.
I feel that we are very, being very successful with what we have, absolutely.
And getting a good R O I for the money spent.
Yes, I think we we are. Our our county is going to be seeing more, I believe, coming this following, this this coming year. Especially with the impacts that we're seeing in Southern Oregon, I think we're going to see a lot more impact on our farmlands, on our water usage. I think we're going to see a lot more impact on our community, seeing different things starting to pop up in this area. Especially with the moratorium that's being put on Oregon, Oregon Department of Agriculture. Because of the state emergency they've applied in Southern Oregon. So I think we're going to see a lot more moving up this way, I think our county is prepared to see that. With staffing, we're hoping to have some more staffing to be able to handle that. It's kind of trying to foresee the future and what we're going to be exposed to this year, but yes.
Okay.
And it was that twenty, you were correct, that twenty-five million is what I was referring to.
Yep, that's for the state and it has to be applied for, so.
And and of course, the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, we're working on that right now, so.
Commissioner Chang, I see your hand is up.
Yeah. You're like, mostly our job as commissioners that participate in this meeting are to kind of provide background information and not push in certain directions. But I I did, I want to say two things about the Sheriff's Office's work in this arena. Number one, we know that with the staff that we have working on law enforcement against black market marijuana production. There is a massive backlog of investigating, I mean, there's a massive backlog of cases that could be investigated, and so we sort of see triaging, like the most egregious, largest operations, suspected black market operations are the ones, are the only ones really that that we we have time to get to. So there's, there's that issue. And then I I did want to, just in terms of background information, I wanted to share that. The information that I'm hearing about, uh, our, our, our budget for FY twenty twenty-three. And the budget, upcoming budget hearings, um, the sheriff's office is, uh, is going to be under some significant financial strain. Um, is going to have to consider, um, raising the assessed property tax rate. For, uh, rural district two, uh, you know, already, uh, without kind of talking about. This piece, which relative to the overall for sheriff's budget is, is quite small, but, um, I just want people to know that. The, the sheriff's office is not necessarily, um, you know, flush with tax revenue or property tax revenue to be able to do. Uh, everything we'd like it to do.
Thank you.
Dustin, again, if that's okay. Now you commented that, uh, salaries come from the county and, you know, so this money doesn't affect those.
This money could back, could backfill what we're putting up. Does that make, and, and I, I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn, I, um, I'm not.
If you're working at a deficit, this could backfill that deficit.
It could help, it could help cover the costs that we're already covering, because I mean, we could, we could drain this whole budget. And, and not, not fulfill what we're backfilling. Does that make sense?
Totally.
Um, and with, for us for seeing more coming, um, we could use more. But I'm not here to say that our sheriff's office needs this entire budget, but, um, because there are other important aspects of. Uh, this budget and why this board is put together for those, but for those purposes. Um, but by no means is our sheriff's office being completely backfilled for what we are, what, what our office is putting into it or what our county has been putting into it.
So I guess the other part of my question was, you know, maybe instead of, you know, and I, I understand where you're coming from of that. I was just trying to figure out where those positions were paid from. Um, but instead of this going into a general fund that, as you said, just backfills, you know, I'm sure there's additional equipment. You know, for instance, like I think I read somewhere that one of those infield THC testers is like seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah, roughly.
And to me, that might be money well spent and we could identify exactly where it goes into it instead of into a general fund. Because, you know, at our last meeting, your comment was that the number one, I mean. You know, these last two illegal grows are obviously straight up illegal. Um, not trying to hide under the guise of hemp, but you had commented at the last meeting that probably the largest offender. Of illegal cannabis are being grown under the guise of hemp.
Yeah, that could change each year based on how the permitting's coming out, so yeah.
Yeah, and, and now we are seeing this influx of just straight up illegal moving in, it seems. But I still think that, you know, to your point that the hemp may be where. There's a lot more that we don't even know about and that the testing. Equipment would go a long ways to helping in what seems to be your largest and hardest to. Manage and identify sector.
Yeah, the equipment, uh, sometimes the equipment's great, but if we can't get on the property to do the testing in the first place, it's, it, it stops us in our tracks. So the investigative, um, methods that we can use to legally get on property that we're not violating people's rights, that we do it. There's a lot that we could test, um, and as Commissioner Chang mentioned, like the backlog of cases, there are plenty of cases. And as we come out into the summer where we start seeing more like deprivation houses and different things showing up. The ability to get out there and do that is going to come to manpower at that point. Um, we, we currently have two Orange Platonic, uh, Light Labs that we use. Um, and right now that is sufficient for what we are doing for work. Would it be nice to have more if we had more men to run them? For lack of a term, I'm sorry, men or women to run them. Um, that would help. It would, it's come down to more of a staffing issue than it does come down to a testing issue at this point. But those two of our, we already have two, um, labs that are purchased through our sheriff's office. Um, and we are using those as it is right now. Uh, we are blessed. There are places across the state that don't have testing labs. Um, so for us to have those labs and our sheriff buying us those for the, or those for us was a huge blessing for investigations.
It seems like our county should try to stay, well, granted, there's the backlog that Commissioner Chang mentioned, but. To try and stay ahead of the illegal operations is better than letting them come in and then trying to shut them down.
It's, it's hard because law enforcement is usually reactive. Tell when somebody's going to commit a crime and stop them before they. It would be nice if we could do that, that would make a big difference in, in how things unroll. Um, but unfortunately, law enforcement is reactive, um, because we, we need to have that case to investigate or prove, I need to know where I'm looking. Um, and people aren't going to come out and fill out a tip sheet that they plan on committing the crime. I mean, it's, it would be nice. It would be, it would absolutely be nice. Um, and, and with growing of hemp and growing with cannabis, it's, it's hard too, because. Um, when all your water lines go in the ground and all your houses go up and your organization starts, there's still not plants in the ground. So I don't know what they're growing, whether they're growing a CBD plant, a hemp plant, or if they're growing a, uh, marijuana plant. I don't know. So, and then, and then that investigation has to start once it, once it starts. Uh, a lot of that lies, and we've talked about it in a couple of our other meetings on, um, OLCC and Oregon Department of Agriculture as far as issuing of permits. Whether permits are being issued after plants are in the ground, whether they're not. Um, and, and this year with House Bill three thousand that came through. Um, it's going to give Oregon Department of Agriculture and OLCC more teeth to go out and hold people accountable. And do, um, random testing and different things like that. Understand that when those guys go out and start doing their testing, when they start having hot, uh, crops come back, those referrals are going to come into us. And then it's going to turn into another triage situation where I, I can't hit them all. I can't, I can't take care of them. I just physically can't do it with a number of, uh, manpower. I don't know that any county could, um, so we're going to have to pick the ones that are, that are causing the most impact to our community. And we're going to have to triage them down through there. This is uncharted territory. This is new to everybody across the country, not just Oregon. Um, Oregon, California, Washington, or who's getting a lot of it, and a lot of it's because of the ability to grow cannabis plant in. Uh, these states, uh, under different regulations. So, um, it opens up a very, very large box of issues. Uh, we are constantly trying to figure out how to deal with it, so, um, and a lot of that comes down to staffing and manpower. Um, and like I said, I, it would be nice to sit here and say we could take this budget, but this budget is not a very large budget. We know that. And there are a lot of things that need to be addressed, so we are operating through grants and different things where we can. Some of these questions we better answered by the sheriff and by our captain that is holding those budgets specifically. Um, and they can be, I mean, I can reach out with them and ask, um, where they specifically could use that money. But again, a lot of it is our sheriff's office in our county are fronting the bill on a lot of this, so.
Was there a moratorium on permits for hemp?
In Deschutes County, and I believe that moratorium may be coming to, uh, an end in the next year. Is that correct? Maybe our commissioners could answer that.
Commissioner Dare, you have your hand up. Did you hear that question from Dustin?
I don't really have, I don't have an answer to that one. I was just going to say, um, the one thing I noticed, because I went on the original raid when it was hemp. And half the field, uh, was marijuana, was the fact that the licensing people, the lab that was going to come out and test the plant. They weren't ethical either. So how do we know with House Bill three thousand? That the Department of Ag is actually going to enforce things because they had hired some labs that truly weren't ethical. I remember there was like a dumping little plant outside the greenhouse that really had nothing to do with the giant plants. That marijuana plants were planted on George Cyrus last summer. So, and that seemed like, uh, we had to wait. I mean, I know they had to do, get everything lined up in order to actually do that raid. But it was, um, you know, it was a huge, huge operation with someone from, that had come in from California. And I'm not sure about the hemp moratorium. I know, um, water's been a real issue, so I, I, I really, I'd have to look it up.
So the answer on the testing of other labs, testing, um, hemp license sites. The way they did it down south, down south when they had, um, so House Bill didn't go into effect till January. But the emergency portion of it did go into effect when it was signed by our governor. Um, that gave the authority for ODA and OLCC to put together a team, and I believe the operation was Table Rock, I think is what it was called. Um, but they went out and they used Light Labs, like what we're using to test onsite, to be able to tell what things are. Therefore, you're, the, the operators or people that are making those decisions, it's not subcontracted out to private labs. More than that.
So, um. Hunter. The, the competition you have with illegal grows in this county. Um, are you, are you seeing a lot of the cannabis grown here illegally is having an impact on your business? Or is the cannabis grown here being shipped out to states where, um, it's still illegal?
Uh, it's both. Yeah, I mean. Not, not in Deschutes County, but in the rest of the, the state, there's a significant amount of OLCC licensed gross. So the OLCC licensed market has a glut of product now. Um, same thing happened in eighteen, we're in another market crash, supply and demand. We can't wait till we can ship it to other states legally. The illegal side, uh, exploded over the last three years because of hemp. And a lot of it had to do with people that couldn't make it in the legal market or weren't afforded the opportunity to get a license because they lived in a county that had helped it out. So, you know, that was a combined effort and, um, there's no doubt that the legal market affects the. The, the, the legal market here in Oregon, but a lot of that is going to New York and Chicago and. Other places throughout the country, um, you know, Oregon's fed, Oregon, California have grown cannabis for the, for the rest of the country for seventy years. There's just a, a big spotlight on it now. Um, so, you know, I really hope that the coordination between. The OLCC, um, and ODA and the sheriff's departments across the state can hopefully narrow the target, you know, I mean. Shared information has got to be key here where, you know, if you guys can just get a list of, here's all the licenses, everything that's not on this page, you go get. Maybe that gets you on property easier, and I think that there's some methods that could be used with the different agencies coordinating. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's not good. It's, it's really hard for us that are, you know, in the industry to see it because. We try to be good examples for what we believe in and, um, there's a lot of people that just don't care. They don't live here. And, uh, they don't have kids here and they don't support our schools and our grocery stores. All that stuff, so.
Well, I've often said, following the marijuana advisory panel. That you or grown is a great example of doing it right, so congratulations on that. And the sky didn't fall down.
Still falling.
Well, it is, it is, yeah.
No, thank you. That means a lot.
Yeah, you bet. Um, okay, so we've had a lot of discussion. Are there any other ideas from the panelist in, in Zoom? Kyle, Andrew?
Nothing new.
Okay. So what I heard was education, remediation. And, um, the sheriff's department as the three areas of recommendation. For submitting to the county commissioners, uh, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty, no, twenty, twenty twenty-three?
Uh, fiscal year twenty-two slash twenty-three.
Okay, that's how you say it, okay. Is that correct? Did I, did I get those three? Well, and the stabilization center, which was my idea, um, those four. How should we do this? How should we come up? I mean, we could come up with that shortlist. We could choose one, we could choose two. Uh, it seems like the most conversation was around education and, and the sheriff's department. So Gary, would you like to weigh in on your ideas?
On the remediation?
Well, on how we make a decision. For a recommendation to the county commissioners on how to spend this hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in the coming fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, there again, I think I'd go back and, you know, visit our original pillars again. And, and I think most of these three things all align with those pillars, so that makes sense. And we could either, you know, I, I don't know if they're looking for a recommendation from us. That's just this or just this, um, you know, maybe three and kind of ranking them. Might be the way to go and, you know, it's not much money to split a lot of ways to where it's going to really. I mean, that was, you know, I guess my idea with the remediation is a little bit of money might go a long ways in some of that. And I don't really see where other buckets it can come from. But, uh, yeah, I mean, maybe us just having those three recommendations and ranking them or putting those forth. Those are what's important to us, right?
Yes.
I, I, I think, you know, we're talking about a hundred fifty grand, a hundred seventy grand here. I, you know, to me, I think we've all agreed that there's. A lot of things that we wish we could do. We don't have a lot of money to do it with, but, um, I think what we talked about makes a lot of sense. I, I would just split it equally. Amongst the three to four causes, um, so that we feel like we're spreading the funds and getting the most out of our money. Um, I don't think any one department is going to be able to do what they wish they could do with the amount of money they're going to get, but that way we're contributing and contributing equally.
Uh, to the remediation point, Dustin, any cash that's found on premises of one of these illegal grows, where does that go? I think I asked you this. Is that why you've got that Lamborghini out there?
I don't have the exact numbers where it's broken up, but we do, uh, look at asset forfeiture civilly, and that is to send it back to the state and to our, our counties.
Okay.
Goes to the state and then back.
And I don't know the breakdown specifically, I couldn't tell you, but, um, it goes back, we also work under the HIDA. The HIDA realm, which is a high intensity drug trafficking area where we, um, the money is then brought back in. I couldn't tell you specifically where the money goes.
Okay.
But I think maybe Liz's avenue of questioning here is none of it could be earmarked for remediating, uh.
That'd be cool.
An area that was, that they did damage to.
I guess would be, it probably would not be.
So it all goes to the state and then it all comes back to Deschute?
I know that it divvies up, there's percentages, obviously, that will go into, uh, different portions of education, different things like that. Um, some of it does come back for our operations and training and different things like that. Um, large, large cast users aren't extremely common. I mean, they happen. We just had one this, this week that was a decent sized one, but that doesn't mean that it's ours. There's, there's a lot of litigation that has to go criminally and, and civilly before that is allotted back to our state or to our county.
You can't just take it in a satchel and.
Dustin, I mean, you're the one out there seeing these things firsthand. I'm just hearing second, third hand what they look like when. You know, everybody's hauled off.
So it's, it's hard, um, because you do have.
One site may be and another may not, I understand.
Each side, each side's different, right? I mean, we could have people that are growing in their own shops and causing their own issues with soil contamination. We could have people that are what's very common, what we're seeing in Southern Oregon. We now saw it this last year specifically in Deschutes County.
East of town was a mess, right?
Where, where they're essentially the homeowners or the property owners are being shoulder tapped to use their land and their water rights. And they're being paid in large sums of cash to start, um, a down payment. And it, the operation is done in a fashion that a normal person should know that something's not right, doesn't smell right. And they're taking that money in green, uh, to go ahead and let the property be used for, um, the illegal production of cannabis. And they're not following up with checking for permits, making sure that things are legal that are being put on their property. And then in the long run, they're end up, either they get investigated, taken down by law enforcement. Or that particular entity that is paying them the cash will pack up overnight, take their harvest, leave and leave their mess. Now they've been engaged, now those people who own the property have now engaged in that criminal act and they are stuck with a mess.
Property that they.
They're stuck with a mess on their private property and, um, fortunately I feel for them, I really do. Um, but in the beginning of that investigation, uh, I don't think they're really cooperative with law enforcement to come out and just test their product. On their, on their property because they, they're not involved or they're, they're claiming that they're not involved.
Is there any way for the county to come back on those landowners to force that?
So that's the hard part is because the code enforcement will come out and will come out with code violations and potentially could lay heavy fines on. Property owners because of the pollution and the plastic and different things that are left on their property for cleanup, and then it's on that property owner. Um, I know that we have explored and our sheriff has explored with, with, uh, sending out mailers preseason saying. You're responsible for what's put on your property regardless of who it is, it's leasing your property and know that you could be held, uh, criminally liable. If, if signs, signs show that you have aided in this criminal act. Me personally, I don't want anybody in our county to fall victim to that, uh, but we all know that fast cash will get people to turn their head a little bit and allow things to happen. And unfortunately, sometimes people get bit.
It's hard times.
It is, it is, and, and water rights are hard to come by, um, so if people can purchase those water rights to grow and do that. It, it, it is an undue stress upon our county for sure, um, and I guess. And like I said, I feel for, for the people that are influenced by that. But we need to make good decisions as community members of property owners making these business decisions, it's just as anybody, we're engaged in some sort of business that were to be lucrative. And, and potentially get the raw end of that deal.
I realize everyone's different, you know, I mean, it looks like the Lapine thing, the offenders owned the property and it was. In a big barn and everything, but from what I've heard, the one east of town is. Bit of an environmental nightmare out there.
It can be, yeah. So and there's all kinds of avenues, like I said, people are growing inside shops on their own privately owned property. Creating, you know, running their own enterprise. And then other people have fallen victim to the fast cash of allowing people to do something on their property that they shouldn't. Or maybe they should have checked. So I, like I said, I don't want to talk, talk specific to each case, but yes, we do have people within our county that are being approached for. Large hemp grows that aren't hemp gross.
So on, on that point, and Gary, back to your remediation comment. You know, if, if a landowner accepted a sizable amount of money in order to allow an illegal grow to occur. Why should any county money go back to that landowner?
Oh, and that was my.
Yeah.
Well, it's like then, you know, if they receive money, they're complicit.
Exactly, exactly.
We should go back on them, I'm just wondering if there's other situations out there that aren't being cleaned up. And, you know, becomes a, a health hazard to our community.
And that falls mostly on our county enforcement, code enforcement.
Right.
That follows up on that. A lot of times I will do my investigation, once my investigation is done, we refer to county code and county code follows. And that, I don't have a lot of involvement in that portion of it, just because I'm on, moving on to my next case and doing my, my next investigation.
Okay, so we had one idea or two people suggested take the pot divided by four into education, sheriff's department for code enforcement or. Illegal drug busts, remediation and the stabilization center. Divided, I mean, you suggested we rank, I think that's a great idea, Kyle and. Andrew, do you have? A preference for how we? Make the recommendation to the county commissioners?
Definitely. Think that splitting it between all four is. The best method, but I don't feel like all four should get it equal amounts, I think the. Some of the bigger divisions already proceeding. Funding that we've talked about and putting it to where. This money can actually make a difference instead of just getting, you know, kind of dispersed into this everlasting pool. Where it's kind of just gonna be a mist on top of everything else that they're receiving already. So finding the biggest impact and kind of breaking it down from there, which I still feel like education can make the biggest impact, money can go a long ways with educating. And then. So we're in between there and sheriff's department kind of in my opinion on, on the bottom, so receiving some, but I know that we spent a long time last. Three months ago talking about other. Avenues that they were spending money on, like the website and having grants and other opportunities to receive funding as well, so. I think where we can make the biggest impact, putting the most of the pot and kind of breaking it down from there.
So if I heard you write number one, education. Number two, sheriff? I, I. Okay, so can you rank them?
I, I don't have the other two in a row, I just have education one and sheriff four.
Oh, sheriff. Okay. Stabilization and remediation. Two and three, okay. Is that right? I mean, not in that order, but you're just saying.
Yeah.
Okay, sharing those two positions, all right, and Kyle, do you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I'm not in agreement with just splitting it four ways. Because we have a limited amount of money and if you consider, not that I have anything against sheriff, but if you look at their overall budget. In the millions and we're gonna give them forty thousand, that's not a good way to spend money, so I put a proposal in the chat.
Oh. How do I see the chat?
He sent it direct to me by accident.
Oh.
I'm trying to see if there's a way that I can put that on screen for you, but I don't think.
Do you want me to take a picture of it and then I could relay it to the group?
It didn't give me an option to send it to everybody. I don't know why.
Well, Liz, and I would just chime in, to me, again, education is, is top. And then with that component, looking at what other partners we can come up with. That will assist with, with that, with whether it's local networks or whatever, but yeah, I, I, I have to concur with both of them that I think education's number one.
Okay.
And I'm not even sure, you know, remediation is a need, I'm just, I was asking and putting it out there because, you know, I know that. That, there's been some talk about what a hazard that is and that. Nobody's getting it cleaned up, but maybe that. Is more code enforcement than. You know, remediation if most of it's on private property.
Okay, and I believe Eric has the, the chat that Kyle submitted.
Yes, so this is the quote.
Oh, I see, you're gonna read it, very good, well, the old fashioned way.
I think we should buy a testing machine, send fifty thousand dollars for remediation for deserving situations and then a hundred thousand dollars for education.
So I, I just gotta disagree a little bit, I'm sorry. The, the one thing that I really appreciate about the tax revenue going to, towards the health services side, I, I don't want to skip over that. Particularly substance abuse, I, I think wraparound services are something that we need in our community to deal with what's going on. That includes law enforcement, that includes treatment centers and that includes hopefully getting somebody a job. So prevention and substance abuse have got to be in there, I don't want to skip over those.
I totally agree with you, Hunter, that that's important to our community and our society. My only, you know, drawback on it is one ten already took that money from the cannabis taxes.
Yeah.
And it's sitting in a pool in Salem supposedly to be deployed for just that purpose. There's two hundred million sitting in Salem for that purpose, from my understanding.
Totally, I, I, I would love to know.
But I would like to see them deploy that.
Yeah, total.
I, I think education is separate from what that.
Yeah.
Mail health specialist is.
Yeah.
You got two different things here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're not comparing education, we're talking, you know, for substance abuse treatment. And, and I agree with you, I.
Yeah.
I don't want to say that's not important at all, I just kind of feel that, I, I'm a little disappointed. That the one ten money was taken away and it's just sitting there not being deployed.
Maybe, does Representative Crop have any sort of information on that by chance?
No, I mean, I. And I think actually. We could actually get some pretty good information from the county because I believe the county's applied for different grants for some of that one ten money is waiting. As well, what that would look like, I mean, I, I guess as I hear this conversation. I would be, I guess that I don't know if this is appropriate to ask Commissioner Adair, Commissioner Chang, it'd be interesting if. Let's say the priority of this group was that prevention or education model. If we had somebody from public health or behavioral health, say. If we had a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Here's what we would suggest doing with that. And that's just kind of an idea rolling around in my head as I, as I hear people sort of talk about different ideas, I'd be curious to hear people doing the work. What their feedback would be if that was a priority.
Agreed. Yeah, yeah, totally. Yep, yep.
Okay. So I gotta try to rein it in here and believe me, this has been terrific discussion, I think, I think, you know. Really, really good brains at work and terrific comments. We can. Come up with. A prioritized list of recommendations as we're, we've been discussing, we could ask for more information to be delivered to us, Eric, I'm gonna look at you to see if this is okay. To be delivered to us via email and then make recommendations. Via email or potentially even a Zoom call, so we don't have to come here again, but before the budget meeting, budget committee meets. So that we can move forward with our recommendations if we feel that we need to have. Information from the behavioral. Health specialists as, as Representative Crop had suggested, so can we do that?
Yes, we can certainly provide more information and then set up a Zoom calls for the cannabis, cannabis advisory panel to deliberate. What will be difficult from staff's perspective is to differentiate between what will likely be funded anyway versus what won't be. For example, the two marijuana detectives. Will. Be in the budget next year. Regardless, I mean, so that, that's, that's the hard piece is, is differentiating on different programs.
Right, right.
And to that point and, and Hunter's point, I think, you know, the substance abuse and treatment is a very important part of, of this whole puzzle. But, you know, if they're applying for a twenty million dollar grant out of that two hundred million sits in Salem, then.
And again, see.
I don't feel as bad about it not being in there, because I believe it should be in there.
Right, and, and the recommendation we come up with this year does not have to continue next year, we can change it. We can come up with a different recommendation for next year, so. Time is of the essence because we've got the budget committee happening at the end of May. And if we don't come up with recommendations, then. I believe the commissioners will probably spend it and I do see Commissioner Adair's hand up, so let's pause and hear from her.
Um, thank you, thank you, Liz, I just wanted to say that because I'm hearing about the fentanyl being laced with the marijuana. I, I truly, I don't think I've heard enough about that from people that should be talking about it for our kids and that's why I really think the education. Is an important. Fund, I mean, maybe it's gonna be our health department that's gonna do the education, but. You know, fentanyl in marijuana is gonna be a whole horrible issue that I really, I want our kids to be aware of. So I, you know, you guys are making the recommendation, you are the people that live and deal with this on a daily basis and. Uh, yes, I would hope. I would hope that we'd have those two detectives, Dusty and his partner, that would be working on this next year regardless of where this money goes. But education is something that I, I feel is critical at this time. So I thank you for that point of view.
So Eric, what's the timeframe with the budget committee, is the end of May till?
The budget committee meets four days, it's the end of May, they make a, at the end of the week, they make a recommendation. To the board of county commissioners. And then the board of county commissioners adopts the budget in, in June, like mid, mid-June.
Oh, oh, mid-June.
Yeah.
Okay.
You hear it from. So. Gary and Hunter are asking about the fentanyl laced marijuana, I don't know of any specific cases that I could speak to here in the Shute County. Across the country, yes, we have seen through our, our drug partners. Marijuana being found that has been laced with fentanyl, fentanyl is a hot topic right now across our country, car fentanyl, fentanyl, all kinds of different lacing of press pills. Any kind, any kinds of substance being laced with fentanyl, we're seeing heroin with fentanyl, we're seeing meth with fentanyl, we're seeing MDMA with fentanyl. Across, across the country, yes, marijuana has been found to have fentanyl in it being laced and again, it goes back to kind of your black market stuff. Where people growing under regulation with testing in dispensaries and doing it correctly aren't having that, but what we're seeing is everybody is mixing different drugs. And marijuana is something that has been, that we have seen across the country in different drug bulletins and stuff, they are seizing marijuana with fentanyl lace on it, powder sprinkled on it. That's a big concern for kids and I, I understand the education portion, as I have two kids myself. It scares the heck out of me to think of any kind of substance my kids could be taking, they potentially kill them. As well as our regular people on the street that are buying black market that don't know what they're getting, so it is a thing, is it a thing here in the Shute County that we're seeing specifically and issue, no. But it is something that potentially could happen just because we're seeing it and that's why fentanyl is a, is a hot topic. I don't know specifically here in the Shute County where we're seeing that yet, but it's something that potentially could come this direction. So I have a little bit of knowledge on that, but not, not anything that's really happening specifically within our area, but we are seeing it across the country.
Yeah, I was just wondering where that information came from, obviously fentanyl is. Terrible problem in the, in the country and they're mixing it in with everything now, but I had not heard that information yet, so I was wondering.
I mean.
I, I like to be proactive, I, I truly like to be proactive, the other day, Jadas Garso said that we had fentanyl strips. And I thought, oh my gosh, so we've got the fentanyl strips, but where's the fentanyl education? So that's why I brought it up because we do have fentanyl strips. So, yes.
Um, okay, so I, I, I think we have sort of consensus.
You all agree on education.
Yeah, I mean, I think education is top priority and then. You know, the, the other, are you gonna take remediation off the table, Gary?
That could be code enforcement.
If code enforcement was in there, yeah.
Okay, so then the other two topics are. The sheriff's department and the stabilization center. And. My recommendation is. Well, you know, Patty is saying the stabilization center is probably gonna get funding. So let's just say number one is education, let's add the other two. And again, this is a recommend, this is a proposal to the panel, this is not a decision here. And why, when the budget committee meets to discuss, they, they see this. Recommendation from the cannabis advisory panel and maybe they have the, the queries with the different department heads that. Head up these areas and say, you know, what would X amount of dollars do for you or what could you do with X amount of dollars?
Or if they come up with X amount of dollars from education. Then it could be decided like who's gonna do that, it may not necessarily be behavioral health.
Right.
Um, but just having that caveat of these dollars would go there.
Right. Okay, I, I saw Andrew nodding. Kyle, where do you sit on this idea?
Yeah, I think that's fine, I'm, I mean, I could go all for education, substance abuse. We just put it all there or, or my proposal or something in between, but I think we're on the right track and I. You know, I don't have really super strong feelings.
Okay.
And, you know, I think the other part of it too, I mean, I was willing to take remediation off if we looked at code enforcement and helping that. Because I think that would be one in the same kind of.
Oh, if it, if some money goes to code, code enforcement within the county.
Yeah.
I see, okay.
These situations and these, make these people clean up.
Okay.
Our code enforcement department enact stricter fines like other counties in the United States where they'll, they'll go in and clean up the job and put the bill on the owner. Why do we have to just let it sit there with warnings that are kind of like. Can be ignored, you know, like. Tax foreclosures, taxing, something that will. Really put a step in these owners. To get them to clean up the property, so it's not polluting. Our neighbors.
Eric has a response?
Yes, the first thing is, is code enforcement is a, they strive for voluntary compliance on any code violation, so there's a. Citation is issued, they work with the property owners on remediation, our goal in the county is always voluntary compliance. If that doesn't occur, then we pursue the, the courts, through the courts and it's really up to the judge, it's the, a judge's decision about. That the fines. Associated with, with somebody who's not in compliance.
Including putting a lien on the property or?
Yeah, I think, it's a, it's a long, it's a, because of, of private property rights, it's a, it's a, in due process, it's a long process. The other thing is, is. Just from a staff's perspective, remediation in terms of code enforcement. Is much easier than remediation to. Give private property owners money to clean up their own property, so that would. That would be very difficult to manage from a, a government funds perspective. So just a comment from staff.
Yeah, and then other property owners that go, well, heck, if the county's gonna give me money for having an illegal, illegal grow to clean it up, I'll, yeah, we don't want that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Code enforcement.
Yeah, it's existing process and.
Okay, so education. Uh, code enforcement. Sheriff. Which could be another testing unit. Right? Uh, and.
Health services.
And health services. Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you guys got a couple of units already, if you don't need another one, put the money where you think it makes sense, in my opinion. Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you guys got a couple of units already. If you don't need another one, put the money where you think it makes sense, in my opinion. But I, those those sound great to me.
Okay.
That's easy.
Okay.
We've got education, we've got health services, and we've got enforcement. Yeah, exactly. So that makes sense to me.
Okay, and then as far as the division of that, we will let.
Trust them.
Yeah, exactly, because that's what they do.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, did we get that recorded? Okay, terrific.
I can make a motion.
Oh, yes, we probably do need a motion, don't we?
I'll make a motion for the um. Cannabis advisory panel to suggest that the money be used for education. Health services and enforcement with, so enforcement would include both Sheriff's Department code.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
Look at that, we did some.
Hey, that was amazing. Okay, let me go back to the agenda. Where are we? Uh, public comments. Any public and is it? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to offer any public comments? Okay, um then the next steps are to determine when the July meeting will be. Should we do that now?
We could either do it now or we can send out a doodle poll, whatever the chair and committee.
Since most of us are here, why don't we try? And then. Uh I think Joseph is the only person that's um not participating in this meeting. And we usually have these, the third Monday of the month, one, two, that's the eighteenth. Of July.
That's correct.
Anybody have a conflict on the eighteenth?
At six. Same time.
That time. That time, that place.
Okay.
Same thing. I mean, yes. And Andrew and Kyle, is that good for both of you? Yep. Okay. So you'll send an email out confirming that and then?
Yes, we will send an email out telling people to hold their calendars. We'll reserve the room. We'll plan on doing both the hybrid model of in person and via Zoom. Seems to work well.
Google invite. My life is Google Calendar, I'm sorry.
Sure, we can figure, yes, yes, we'll do both.
Okay, um is there any other business we need to conduct tonight?
I know, just just in terms of uh what topics for next meeting, there's a suggestion, but it's really up to the committee on the July meeting.
I think we will be looking at whatever comes out of that budget committee.
Yeah.
Uh that'll be an information item, um but in terms of what the committee would like to discuss.
What was that suggestion?
When you look at the the three charges of the committee, it's to give input on the the budget process, law enforcement, and then the third item was. Uh issues presented by the production, processing, wholesaling and distribution of marijuana in the unincorporated areas. Subject to county jurisdiction. What we could do is, um I talked to Peter Gutowski, our Community Development Department Director. And they could come in and do a presentation about what CDD does in terms of the annual inspections and kind of the that process. Um and then that could lay the foundation for a discussion on this topic area. Which is is the third area that the the advisory panel is is will will provide recommendations on.
Yeah, I'd like to see a presentation on, you know, the stats, what are they seeing, how many businesses are out there, you know, how many people are affected, what are the. You know, environmental costs, anything allowing around the impact.
And then I'd also like to hear from marijuana cannabis businesses on what are you seeing, right? Um the good, bad, and the ugly out there.
That sounds great.
And there was also a mention of a doctor coming in, talking about long term effects for juvenile use. And that was brought up um as a possible topic, I believe, in one of our first meetings. Which I think would be interesting if we're looking towards the education portion of it. Yeah, I'll check with Dr. Barry. He um is moving to Eugene this summer. But I'll check the date and see if 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 he's available to to come in. With the committee, I mean, that's probably, that might be too much for one agenda with. Would the committee like us to prioritize Dr. Barry coming in? Or what's what's the pleasure of the committee? Or you want to put it all in one meeting? We're happy to do whatever you would like.
I I had just brought up because it had been mentioned a couple of meetings back and it was interesting to me um as far as development of juveniles using. Uh marijuana at a young age and how it affects uh affects their, you know, paranoia, just their their functions. Um and if we're talking about education with juveniles and kids and different things like that, that might help us narrow down. Um delegation as to how we target.
Yeah.
Education.
I agree.
Uh and that that was just something that's brought up that I was thinking about, but if if we don't have him next, that's fine.
Well, I I love that idea. And and firstly, I would like to learn about that as well. Is there any other resource in the county and the nation that could come in and talk?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure if Dr. Uh Barry is not available, we can we can find another local expert.
And what time is it now? How long have we? It's only seven thirty. Um, I mean, I think if we had a two hour planned on a two hour meeting next time. Really, it's more for education and discussion than coming coming up with the recommendations. I think we can probably get through that amount of information.
Sure.
Right, so I I'd say add it to the, add it to the um agenda. And maybe have that as the first agenda item and then the discussion with the the industry in the county is the second.
We'd be happy to do that.
Is that good?
Liz, I thought Dr. Barry's last day was like July first. If he is still available, he is so outstanding. I just feel that um the information he could share with us would be truly worth the time. So I hope he can make it to our meeting.
Check with him, even if he has, he and his family are moving to Eugene. And even if he's there, he might be willing to to zoom in. He has a, you know, deep care for this community and the work, so.
Right.
I could check with him.
Good.
Or or if he can, I'll see who he might want to recommend.
I'll beg him.
Commissioner does very persuasive, so. We'll double team.
Okay, uh. I believe we are going to conclude the meeting. Okay, I think the meeting's over. Bang.
Well, thank you. Liz, I want to, my hat's off to you for chairing the meeting and taking care of this and keeping things organized. You did a great job.
Oh, well, thank you very much, Kyle. I appreciate that. It is a tough crowd.